Yeah, so she'll be. Okay.
Yeah.
No? See how lucky you are to spend time while you're?
Yeah, is that what you're calling it?
We're good. John says we're good. Okay, give me one second. I gotta get on my board. That's wrong.
Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any comments or questions on the agenda for tonight? There being none, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, agenda is approved. First call for a public comment? Do we have any?
I don't.
Okay. No public comment this morning? Or this morning, I know. Up first for discussions and presentations, we have false horse recognitions. Matt Stofel is gonna lead those.
Thank you. I always appreciate the opportunity the school board provides each season for us to bring athletes, soon athletes here to the board meeting to be recognized. These two programs are starting to become a tradition. Both of these programs have unbelievable leadership at the top, starting with their head coaches. So I'm gonna turn it over to study first with Cross Country with Coach Muckell.
All right, so we had, we had a nice year last year and we brought the kids up here. And then this year, we decided back in June that we were all in. And so, I'll never forget, Stof made a comment to me early on when I met him, how every time he drove throughout Seago when he was working on, working in Allegan, he felt like he was gonna run over a cross-country kid because they were everywhere. And I feel like we, the commitment these kids have put in, if you're driving around town, you're seeing one of them out there somewhere. They, they put in, as a program, boys and girls this year, from June 1st to November 2nd, we put in over 16,000 miles of running. So they have done an unbelievable job committing to the program, committing to what we're doing. On the boys' side this year, we knew Sully, obviously, is a senior coming back and being a three-time stater was gonna be up there, but the other boys really stepped up. We had four boys register on our top 10 all-time school record board this year. So to see them break, I mean, to break 17 and to get into those 16s and to hit that record board was a really big deal. Our overall record on the season on all races we did was 156 and 36. They were runners, they were runner-up at the regional only to a Marshall team, who their top runner just committed to Michigan for the next year. He was one of the top in the state. And then they finished, we were projected, I think, 17th going into the state meet, and the boys finished 12th. We had five of our seven boys run lifetime best at the state meet, which is a very difficult thing to do. And the two that didn't were within seconds of their lifetime PR. So the commitment and the work ethic that these boys put into this season absolutely blew my expectations out of the water as even a coach. But the, the beauty of it is the work shown through and the commitment they put into it was pretty fun. So we're gonna bring them up to kind of celebrate them a little bit here. So I'll announce names and then Ms. Nash can pass out certificates. Charlie Brower. Is there more than one of those? Cooper Goff. Trey Hall. Xander Hallick. Tony Hilton. Reese House. David Corey. Aiden Martin. Adrian Perez. Noah Ranson. This is Adrian. Don Trail Taylor. Larry Watson. Mason Wolf. Max Wolgast. Jonah Zatlow. And Sullivan Zatlow. Well, they get a picture. The beauty of this group is the only senior on this team is Sully. And Sully will be going on to Cornerstone next year and Grand Rapids on a running scholarship. So he'll be up there next year running for them. We have a very large junior group, soon-to-be-senior group, that we fully expect to come back and be up here again next year with maybe some little better results. So we're pretty excited about the potential of what we have coming and the seasons ahead with this group. So they've, it's been a really special group and been really fun to watch, so. Ms. Nash just brought up, I told the kids if they won the conference this year, I'd run a half marathon with them. So I'm, I did an eight-miler on Sunday. That's where I'm at on that one. So I'm, I'm surviving at this point. So I told them the goal is to finish, not win. That's the goal, finish, not win.
One other thing, sorry, is this? One other thing I want to add, because I just noticed Coach Yosa's here. The other thing that these two coaches and these two programs have in common is they have totally bought into Coach Yosa's weight room program. A lot of people don't believe that when I talk about our boys' country team or the girls' volleyball team, but both Coach Jurgens and Coach Muckell's attendance through Coach Yosa's program has been through the roof. So another unbelievable accomplishment for that team. So congratulations to both of them on that. Next up, Coach Jurgens and the Wildcat Volleyball.
Thank you. And I just wanna go off of that with Brock and the weight room, just because we set the hours. If we didn't have the girls that we did, I mean, I can't force them to get out of the bed in the morning and go. So that definitely says a lot about who they are as athletes and how much they want it, even though they might wake up a little groggy and, ugh. But they are, they put in the work once they're there. So I couldn't be more thrilled with the girls that I have. Going into this season, we graduated seven seniors last year, and we have a very tough conference. We had two state-ranked teams going into conference play this year. We were not one of them, but we came out on top with conference champs. And that was definitely something that, we didn't know going into the season what we were going to get. So it just, all of our accomplishments this season goes back to these girls and the work that they put in this summer. We started a week after school got out and finished mid-November. And so these girls played a lot of volleyball. And I know that it's not a main sport for some of the girls, and some of the girls it is. And they've just put in so much work in-season and out-of-season to make this possible. So thank you, girls, and thank you, parents, for allowing them to come to all of the things because it definitely is a reason why we're becoming more successful as a program. Our record was 28 wins, 12 losses, and eight ties. Our highlights were conference champs, fourth time in school history, and our seniors and one, a couple of our juniors, this is back-to-back conference champs for them. So that's awesome. They have two of the four conference champs under their belts. This is also our fourth time in school history being district champs. And then this is only our second time in school history that we've made it to the Sweet 16, which is the regional finals for Division II. So that's a huge accomplishment for them. Out of these athletes, you look at it, looking at our other schools, and they might have more girls that play year-round or that are committed to bigger schools than what we are. But we were still able to get a lot of recognition for our girls. And I just think that that comes back to how we play as a team because if we didn't play as well as we did as a team, then we wouldn't get any of the recognition that these girls get. So we started off with five all-conference athletes, three all-region athletes, and one all-state athlete. The team is real smart and they got team academic all-state. They were one of three teams in the conference to do that. We had three academic all-state seniors. They're three of the six that were recognized in the conference. And then we have two academic all-Americans. So that is awesome. Going into this, I just wanna say that we are losing some girls that I love very dearly and being a part of this program, only as a varsity coach for two years, but the JV coach for four years prior to that. I've had some of these girls their entire careers and it's just been an honor to coach you guys and get to know you guys throughout your high school experience. So thank you for letting me do that and thank you, Three Rivers, for allowing me to get to know these girls. Going into the certificates, Natalie Paczinski. Saka Beechey. Rayleigh Berg. Jasmine Carson Moore. Dani Glass. London Hoffmaster. Leah Kane. Adeline Moore. Kendall Penny. Peyton Roberts. Miley Southland. Tori Thobbe-Johnson. And Aliyah. Thank you.
As a member of the school board, you always get a little nervous when you pull into the parking lot on meeting nights and see it packed. And then you have your non-panic moment when you remember it's that we get to honor our student athletes. On behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you to coaching staff, administrators, parents, and the athletes. Your coaches aren't lying when they tell you how much they appreciate the time and effort that gets put in and the commitment that you guys have to your sports and your teams and your school and your community. Can't tell you how many times this season I had people in the public ask me about the Three Rivers Athletics, especially the volleyball and the cross-country, and to say how cool it is that such a small community is pumping out teams of this caliber. So thank you again and congratulations. And the rest of the meeting's probably gonna be pretty boring for all of you. So if you want to go now, you are free to go.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Look at all the people leaving. Can you believe it? The end. They're gonna watch the rest on YouTube.
Of course.
Sure.
Oh, it is.
It is. Maybe we should do that for one of the classes.
Yeah, there you go.
Should be continuing education.
That's good for soccer.
Oh, yeah.
Being able to run like that.
Yeah, well, he's a defensive player. I, I was shocked.
Yeah, I could never. I mean, I could run for basketball.
All right, for the rest of you who stayed for this fun, exciting meeting, let's get down to business. Up first for our presentations, we have Gaybridge &amp; Company, the final 2023-24 audit report. And you have the report in your booth classroom?
Good evening. I appreciate the reference to the rest of the, the meeting being boring right before the audit presentation. Sets the bar nice and low. My name is Joe Burrow and I'm from Gaybridge &amp; Company. And I, I thank the board for the opportunity to, to be here tonight. And I thank Mandy and Nikki for all of their efforts and the rest of the audit team at the school, or the audit prep team at the school for, for helping make the, the audit go smoothly. And I don't intend to cover all 85 pages of, of the audit report. Hopefully, that's not too upsetting to, to anyone. I'm just gonna cover the financial highlights. And if there's any questions along the way, I'm more than happy to, to answer them. So starting on page one of the audit report, this is what matters more than anything else. And the second paragraph down is where we include the paragraph on the financial statements, or the, the opinion paragraph on the financial statements. We wrote, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the school as of June 30, 2024." This is a clean opinion on your financial statements. This is the, the gold standard or the highest level of an opinion that we can provide on financial statements. And it means that your controls are suitably designed and effectively operating, allowing you to produce accurate, timely, and verifiable financial statements. So we work with Department of Education, we work with the county, various other financial institutions to, to confirm and verify the numbers that were provided to us. And accordingly, we provided a clean opinion. It should always be the school's goal to have a clean opinion on our financial statements, but it certainly means something to, to achieve it. The next section that I take readers through starts on page five. And this is the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. And the reason I take readers through this is because it provides financial highlights. The very first page of the, the MD&amp;A section has four bullet points hitting on some of the more significant financial highlights. It's got two-year comparative information, so you can see side-by-side how the school's finances look in 2024 compared to fiscal '23. And then there's reasons that explain, some, some narrative explanation behind some of the more significant changes in, in your financial statements during the past two years. So just a really good Cliff Notes version of the entire audit report. Going through these financial highlights, that first bullet point shows a theoretical number. Theoretically, if, if the school were to sell all of its assets and pay all of its liabilities, there would actually be a deficit. There wouldn't, there would be $15.5 million, not enough to cover the liabilities. And the reason for that, that virtually every district in the state of Michigan is reporting a deficit net position, the reason for that being the long-term retiree healthcare and net pension liabilities that you're including on your statement of net position. And we'll see what those numbers look like. So it doesn't look good to see that number, but virtually every school district in the state of Michigan has a deficit unrestricted net position. Second bullet point down, now, this number does matter a little bit more than, than the first bullet point. Revenues came in at $41.8 million for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, compared to expenses of $35.2 million. So you had an increase in your net position of $6.6 million during the course of the year. If a reader of the financial statements asked the question, "Is the school better off financially at June 30, '24 compared to June 30, '23?", the answer is yes, by about $6.6 million. And I should mention, this is on the accrual basis of accounting, or the, the long-term basis of accounting. So we're depreciating all of the infrastructure that the school's invested in. We are recognizing pension and retiree healthcare expense. All of these long-term assets and liabilities are being included and amortized over a period of time. Third bullet point, now we're talking about just the fund balances of the school. Now, I think of fund balance as being kind of similar to checkbook accounting. What are your immediate resources available to cover your immediate obligations? And at the end of the year, your fund balance, the school's fund balance, or this, during the year, the school's fund balance decreased by $13.4 million. So in other words, cash out exceeded cash in by roughly $13.5 million. And they might not seem like a good thing, but $17 million was expended of your 2020 bonds on various school projects. So $17 million being expended on capital, long-term capital projects is the reason that you had an overall decrease in, in your total fund balance. Fourth bullet point, now we're talking just about the, the unassigned fund balance in your general fund. So your general fund is your most important fund. Unassigned fund balance is the most important element of fund balance in your general fund. That's the amount the school has at its disposal to cover the day-to-day cost of, of running the district. Unassigned fund balance came in at $3.9 million. If we divide that by the annual general fund expenditures and transfers out, you're at 12.2% funded. Michigan Department of Education wants to see at least 10%. So you guys are at a very healthy spot. Not too much, not too little. 12.2% is a stable financial position as of June 30, 2024. More importantly, or as importantly, your fund balance in your general fund increased by $1.34 million. So cash into your general fund, your most important fund exceeded cash out by $1.34 million during the year. Next, if you go to page seven, this is the first page of the comparative financial statements. And this shows your assets and liabilities for each of the past two fiscal years. Just a couple rows that I wanted to point out. The very top row, cash and investments decreased by roughly $13 million. So the very last column is your 2023 results, 40, basically $41 million of cash and investments. That number decreased down to $27.8 million. Again, that was because of the, the $17 million of capital expenditures that were incurred during the course of the year. And that's what those bonds were there for. They were there to be expended. If you look about five rows down from there, you can see that for the first time, the school's reporting a net OPEB asset. Every school district in the state of Michigan is reporting now a net OPEB asset. What that means is the MIPSers, retiree healthcare assets generated about an 8% return on investment during the most recent actuarial valuation. And because of those favorable results, the net OPEB liability has now actually been converted into a net OPEB asset. So that's a good trend. We would much rather see an OPEB asset versus a liability. If you look about three quarters of the way down the page, we get into the non-current liabilities section. And the top row in your non-current liabilities is the school's net pension liability. At June 30, 2023, the school's reporting $56.3 million of net pension liability. That number improved to a $46.9 million net pension liability. That's the reason the school's reporting a deficit unrestricted net position, is because there's $46.9 million of net pension liability, according to the actuaries, that's going to be paid out by the school, or all the schools that participate in MIPSers over the next 30, 40, 50, 60, I mean, this is decades' worth of liabilities that are, that are going to be paid out. So the school doesn't need to cut a check anytime soon for $46.9 million. It's going to, over the course of time, approach and become zero as you guys continue to make your annual required contributions into the MIPSers plan. Over time, that number is gonna become fully funded and will be ultimately be zero. But we're probably 15, 20 years away from that net pension liability being fully funded. And then unrestricted net position, two rows up from the bottom, you can see that number improved. It was a deficit of $44.7 million, and that number improved to $39.6 million. So we don't like, we don't like seeing deficit unrestricted net positions, but it is trending in, in a positive direction. Next, if you go to page nine, we get to the comparative revenues and expenses for the last two years. And just a couple of things that I wanted to point out here, halfway down in the 2024 column, you can see that total revenues came in at $41.8 million, compared to about $38.4 million for the 12 months ended June 30, 2023. So a healthy increase in your total revenues. A lot of that has to do with just one-time grant funding and the availability of, of grant funds. If you look four rows up at the bottom, the total expenses decreased from $37.9 million to $35.2 million. So your revenue has increased, your expenses decreased. Those are both very good signs. And then if you look three rows up at the bottom, in 2023, the school had an increase in net position. In the corporate world, we would call that net income of $394,000. That number improved to $6.6 million as of, or for the 12 months ended June 30, 2024. Just a few more pages of highlights. If you go now to page 18, we get into the fund financial statement section of the audit report. And the very first column represents the school's general fund. And we talked about the $1.34 million increase. That's three rows up from the bottom in your, in your general fund, a healthy increase in your fund balance. The very next column over shows that your capital project fund, the 2020 bonds, had a $15.7 million decrease in fund balance, simply because $17 million were expended on capital projects during the year. And then all the other governmental funds, or all the other funds at the school are aggregated into that other governmental funds column. You can see that they reported a, a healthy increase in fund balance of $915,000. So your other funds in your general fund had increases in fund balance of about $2.2 million. The only fund that had a decrease in fund balance was your capital projects fund, and that was very much intentional and budgeted during the year. If you go all the way to page 33, that gets us to the footnote section of the report. A lot of times, my school just will ask, "How do our long-term bonds look?" And this just really quickly shows a schedule of the changes in your long-term bonds payable. That middle schedule, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you can see the beginning balance of your bonds payable were about $57 million at the beginning of the year. School paid down $1.75 million of principal, leading to an ending bond payable balance of $55.25 million. So the school's just on schedule to, to make those long-term bond principal and interest payments. And as you continue on, page 35 shows that essentially, there's about $4 million of debt service payments scheduled in the upcoming years to, to cover both the principal and interest payments in future fiscal years. The last thing that I wanted to point out is on page 67 of the report. So in addition to us performing a, a financial statement audit report where we verify your, your assets and liabilities, revenues and expenses, we also, because the school expended more than $750,000 of federal funds, we take a look and we risk-assess all of your federal funds and we pick one or two major programs. And then we look at all the federal guidance and we make sure that you are receiving and expending those funds in accordance with those grant, grant contracts. And you can see halfway down the page in the federal awards section, we actually provided a second opinion on the financial statements. So we issued an auditor's report on compliance over your major programs. This year, your major programs were the SIR funds, as well as Title I, and the opinion was unmodified. It doesn't sound flattering, but that's just another way of saying clean opinion. So clean opinion on your financial statements, clean opinion on compliance over your federal awards. And, and those are the highlights that I've got. But I'm certainly happy to take any, any further questions the board might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
All right, up next, safety and security update. Justin Holbrook, our director.
I think everybody knows who I am for the most part. Justin Holbrook, Safety and Security Director for Three Rivers Community Schools. I just wanted to say that, obviously, this is kind of one of those situations where unfortunately I have to report again today. We've had another incident involving active violence in a school out in Wisconsin. So I want to be there for those families and all the staff and everybody involved in that incident as well. It's not easy to give a presentation on this after something like that has happened, so. With that, I want to thank everybody, including my team. Everybody's been great in bringing me up to speed as I got here. So I thank you and appreciate the opportunity. Everything here is a general overview for the most part, with some add-ins. So it should include some facts that you already know. And then align with the 2019 through 2024 strategic plan for safe and secure environments as well. So gonna go over the emergency operations plan, behavioral threat assessments, law enforcement partnerships, mental health and wellness, and then community relations and trainings that we've had here in the district and just outside, supporting everybody in the district. So we have a fully comprehensive emergency operations plan. It's updated biannually by the law, and it was last updated and reviewed by myself in July of 2024. And that compiled like a bunch of communications, making sure that the people that were listed there were up to date. So that has been completed. It was in process before I got here, but it is complete. We have a slew of hard and soft securities here. So those are our cameras, our fences, our staff, what they're doing in the buildings every day and connecting with kids. And then, of course, it goes into our secure access protocols and things of that nature. I'm working with John Lindon I'm working with John Lindonell in the IT department, so I appreciate him very much in getting me up to speed in what we have there. And I'll go over a couple of the things that we're working on currently in the future here. Our secure access protocol is part of that. We're reviewing and revising that, looking at what we're allowing into our buildings and how we're allowing people in, what access they have with our secured entrances and our locked doors. That's with staff and everyone involved. And that brings us to the visitor access protocol. So visitor access protocol, we're piloting a new program. I'm going to talk about it in a little bit. And we are reviewing that as the strategic plan is requested as well. And how we're letting people in and making that process cleaner and safer for everybody within our buildings. Behavioral threat assessments and teams. We do have a team established. I know Mrs. Baker asked me specifically about this. I asked you for something and you came forth with a packet, so I appreciate that. If it's long-winded, everyone, it's her fault. I promise you that. And then mental health supports as well, as being a big focus for our 24, 25-year strategic plan. So the hazards in the EOP, it's, it's a hazard analysis that involves everything from all natural and human caused. It focuses on preparedness, prevention and mitigation of those hazards. We operate under the Incident Command Structure from the Department of Homeland Security and through their NIMS. That is, basically it covers the organizational structure, assignments, roles, responsibilities, and how we deploy people and what those strategies are if and when we have an event or an incident occur. All the staff that are on our ICS are kind of specialized in what they do and placed into that. So if it's finance and it's into procurement and claims, then that person is involved there, so on and so forth, all the way down through medical. And so, you know, whatever we have on that structure. Everyone has received, per the EOP, the training or is currently taking the training for ICS 100 and 700. And that's the basis of understanding that structure through FEMA. It's an online program and it's free to us. All the ICS staff are CPR, first aid and AED trained. That's intentional. So even if we have a finance person who's not boots on the ground, if we need them, they can help. It establishes a communications plan internally and externally, how we communicate with staff, the media, our stakeholders within the community. And that, it's guided and structured within the EOP. There's a set of notification procedures as well on how we get that stuff out there. And so obviously we use a lot of technology for communications. It provides information and structure on how to put things into the website, school messenger, how we're going to contact people on social media, using our PA radios and stuff for our internal communications with staff. The communication tools that have been implemented since then, I drafted and finalized an emergency communications guide with templates. The idea behind this was that we didn't need to come up with something at the moment to provide communication to parents, other stakeholders, the media, that it would be a fillable document that would be, not have to thought about in the moment that an event or an incident occurred, taking that stress off and leaving us to be able to focus better on the event. So it covers all those areas, websites, school messenger, socials. They're still approved by the superintendent and they're done by our public information officer, Lori. So.
That's a very official title.
She likes. Another title. There's hazard-specific annexes within the EOP, and it's going to go over all those human caused and natural and mechanical utility failures. So all the way down to things that Brian's team handles here as well. It's extremely comprehensive. It meets and exceeds our specific target areas within the Department of Homeland Security, as well as aligning with our district policies. I can't talk about the specific annexes. Obviously, in a public forum, it's there to remain that secure. And then additionally, it covers recovery and mitigation moving forward. And then short-term, long-term evacuation and reunification with families and stuff, if there was ever an event that needed, or that needed that, or an incident that occurred. And then a continuity of operations plan, how to regain our continuity and get back to education as quick as possible. And we have had some things happen where we've had to get that going pretty quickly. So it's scalable and it can be not as big as what NIMS makes it, but it, it works across the board. There's various dependencies in there that help with the organizational aspects of all of this. So there's plans, checklists, reports, forms, instructions to everybody on where to go from the beginning in prevention and planning, all the way through mitigation and getting back into the co-op. The needs of the EOP right now, under our district policy 8402, it requires that all of our instructional and recreational spaces are assessed and that there is an EOP plan developed for them. We're lacking in the area of the athletic structure and fields. I'm happy to report that 97C is opening up additional grant funds for those spaces that weren't previously assessed. So I know you're familiar with that report from SEC on our buildings. But that will include Armstrong Field, baseball, softball, soccer fields to come further in appliance. Those are all areas that were not previously assessed and can be used in the grant. But at the same time, we need events going on in those spaces in order to accurately do those assessments. Additional annexes and the appendices will be added in as we review that. So not just as a biannual, but as we develop and go through processes and understand what they are, we're updating those as they're needed. So the big ones, probably behavioral threat assessments, and I have to thank my team because they've helped me a lot on this. We do have a multidisciplinary threat assessment team. It's established with protocols and procedures and specific staff. And then we have backups for all of those as well. So all members of that team have been trained by the state standard for the behavioral threat assessment training with Michigan State Police. The administrative guidelines have been established in collaboration with our district policy 8410. That structure has been streamlined down. We use Sigma for our threat assessment forms and suicide risk assessments in the Columbia form. We're utilizing a central reporting mechanism now for the team activation and communications, along with forms that we've created here in order to guide our structure as far as how we're going to go through that process, if we need to do a full threat assessment or not. Law enforcement intervention is utilized when the criteria is met with mandated reporting, obviously as a requirement. And then law enforcement partnerships are secure. We've done some collaborative meetings here requesting policy be drafted on our behalf for, from Three Rivers Police Department in reference threat assessments. Reasoning behind that is they're having a turnover of employees there. And with that, they're bringing in a lot of new structured officers. My, my experience of being less than a five-year cop at that time, I wouldn't have wanted to do some of the things that we're asking of them currently with doing wellness checks and securing firearms. So we've asked them to draft that policy, and that's all being based off the Secret Service documents that have been provided for guidance. And then in IT, this is John's realm, so I don't want to get too far down into it. But we're piloting line-wise, which is supplementing Bark. It's a lot of early intervention. We're seeing things that are being put in with our Chromebook monitoring that kids are, are documenting, and we're able to connect with them early, decipher if we need to conduct threat assessments or if we need to add additional supports and mental health supports in there. So that's been great. The secure access control, like I said earlier, we're reviewing that and then we're piloting Burcata, which is a new visitor management system. And we're just trying to streamline everything into something that's going to be more comprehensive for every, all of our needs, rather than just paying for one program here, one program there, and then having all these different softwares that we have to manage as well. So.
John is giving a department update and figures, so I have some of this information as well.
No pressure, John. All that's utilized, obviously, for preparedness, prevention and mitigation, more so as a focus. These are our law enforcement partnerships, so obviously local, the sheriff's office. And then, like I said, I mentioned the threat assessment policies. I'm not sure if anybody is familiar, but Pivotal has paired with a lot of law enforcement agencies around. So we have Brienne Books, who is a social worker there, and she'll be able to come in and help us on our day-to-day if we need. And then active assailant trainings, I'm certified to train law enforcement in that and have opened it up to our buildings in the past. And they are offering, I've offered that as well again, and they're continuing with that. So they are familiar with our buildings. If there's ever an event that they need to come in, they're training here. They're not going other places, so they know what they need to do when they have to come in and do work. And then a little tidbit on the side, our forensic science program. I'm on Major Crimes Task Force as a technician for crime techs. And we, I was able to go in and do a presentation to guide kids more towards forensic science. And we're working with them to do field trips and do field work with our forensic science class. The biggest thing right now on our mental health side and the biggest focus for this year is we're partnering with Trails with the St. Joseph County ISD. We are the first district selected in the entire state for this work. This is a new development. So we, the student supports that we have in place, and they're all aware of this, PAWS, Guidance Counselors, Pivotal, and our crisis team here as well. And just want to talk a little bit about Trails. It leverages stronger relationships with schools and the community partners and mental health. This is all in response to suicide intervention, and it all comes back to best practices. It develops a stronger referral process, and it lowers the strain on students' families, the education realm, as well as community organizations. It is establishing more effective treatment options, all geared towards hospital diversion. So the reason being is that they're finding through their studies that hospitalization obviously takes kids out of the education realm. They're not getting, they're getting behind, they're not having those family supports in place. And so it is creating more of a risk to actually have them hospitalized than not. Pivotal also has Turning Point now here. It's an urgent crisis care clinic that's available Monday through Friday, only currently day shift, but they are looking to expand that. And that will be a resource for hospital diversion as well. All of this aligns with the strategic plan for additional social and emotional supports. These are the trainings we've conducted so far since they've been in May. CPR, first aid, AED training annually for everybody who's on our medical teams and/or ICS. Stop-lead training, we're looking at purchasing a kit now. I'm an instructor for that through FEMA, so I'm able to do that. We already have some medical kits in the buildings, but we don't have people trained on how to use them. So ACERT is our active assailant training. We conducted that in-house for everyone here. That was in collaboration with Aaron Goff with the Emergency Management Team of St. Joseph County. There's more to come on that in a collaborative I'll talk about at the end. And then security awareness training for our front-end staff. So that would have been all of our administrative assistants and our transportation division, and provided them with training from SEC as well with de-escalation. Behavioral and digital threat assessment training, me and Anthony Walbert completed it. That training was for us to better utilize resources available to us through safer schools together in conducting threat assessments and recognizing threatening behavior online. Then medical response teams, we've been offered from Pivotal to have free Narcan training and have it provided as a free program to the schools. As everybody knows, in this area, it's a growing issue with substance abuse, and there is a risk to our schools in that area. But it hasn't been finalized yet. Incident and crisis response teams, table topping, that's all with SEC. I'm conducting some of those and we're bringing some of the other consultants in for them. That's going to be our incident command structure as well as our crisis response teams. And then we have changed a little bit of onboarding. Instead of just having everyone wait annually, as they come in, I've set up independent meetings for them to be briefed on safety and security and be trained right then and there, so they know exactly what they need to do in an event that it happens. I recently completed ICS 300 training from FEMA last week in reference to their intermediate incident command structure to be able to operate that. And I'm doing their advanced in February. The safety drills, we're continuously reviewing them and analyzing them. We have a state mandated reporting. All that structure comes through me, and then it gets put on to Erin with the county, and then she reports it to the state. It all aligns with our district-wide policies, procedures, and I'm just trying to streamline it down to structures for best practices across the entire district. So when someone leaves from one building to the next, as they often have to, they don't have to be concerned about secure protocols. It happens the same every, every single place that they go. So part of that has been in review and restructuring of our mapping and evacuation routes, rally points, and sheltering opportunities for us if we ever have to evacuate and reunify. And that's been done in collaboration with Brian and Stratasite with all of our mapping. And then we've centralized reporting for the drills, like I mentioned earlier. In our community relations, I'm looking at creating a safety and security video for families to better inform them about what they can do in the event that we have an event or crisis, and their response and what that should look like. It's also going to provide them with information about what we have as a basis for an EOP, so they can feel more confident in having their students in our schools. Safer Schools Together offers a lot of community resources online, and that's being provided as well to parents, so they can recognize threatening behavior within their students, whether that's self-harm, suicide risk, or if it's more tailored towards active violence. The establishment of the reciprocal sheltering agreements is within community partners that we've established, being able to go to if in time of need for reunification and sheltering opportunity. I'm happy to say that we've had a couple of buildings that were unable to have good places to go. And now we have reciprocal agreements that are operating really well. That was all reviewed by Trune. And then first responders, St. Joseph County ISD and Pivotal as other community partners. And then lastly, the school safety collaborative, this is new. As we, as I've been talking with Erin a little bit about what's happening in the, in the community, the aspect was we've gotten a lot of new safety directors across the county and school resource officers. So they have asked that we combine and do a collaborative countywide to get everybody on the same page. So this is all going to be here for regular meetings. We're looking at starting up in January, best practices, networking and collaboration. And that all has to do a lot with Sam Watson out of Sturgis, who is, was an SRO and is now taking Dave's position over there as the director, and myself and Erin, and then working with the other schools. Questions?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and up next, drinking water management plan. Brian Leonard.
Just a second. So now comes the boring part. All kidding aside. Well, since we have Justin here now, and he's able to take over a lot of the things that we had started initiating, you know, a number of years ago, and actually really drive them home, which is absolutely wonderful gift for this district. He's been a great asset. I've been able to focus back on some of the other things that relate more to facilities and operations. So in your board packet, there's a lot more information that I'm going to cover tonight, but just to give some highlights. To bring everybody back up to speed, we've talked about this briefly before. The state of Michigan's Filter First program is a proactive initiative aimed at safeguarding the health of students and staff in K-12 schools by addressing lead contamination in drinking water. It was established under the Clean Drinking Water Access Act and Amendments to the Childcare Organizations Act. The Filter First program became law on October 24, 2023, with Governor Whitmore's approval. The legislation basically mandates that all K-12 schools and childcare centers develop a drinking water management plan, install lead-reducing filters on all consumptive fixtures, and conduct regular testing of filtered water. Schools and childcare centers that are classified as regulated type 2 non-community water supplies must also collaborate with the local health departments. This would be Norton Elementary as a well-based non-community water supply source. Just to give you an example of the report of the drinking water management plan, this is from Andrews University, the one that we've been working on. Well, we've been working on them all, but the one that I have up here today to actually show you. So each one of the schools, we've gone through and developed as required with all the criteria. See if I can get there a little quicker. Basically, a roles and responsibility specification page for each and every school as far as who's responsible for each and every component that's outlined in the actual regulations. We then also have gone through each one of the schools and identified filtered fixture inventory for each one of the schools. So these are all the units that we've identified within the schools that fall within the regulations that will be actually filtered specifically. They've all been classified with their unique fixture ID code. This all transfers into the sampling pages and sampling requirements that we have to maintain on an ongoing basis. Coupled with that, we also have every other place where water can come out in a building, and the non-consumptive fixture inventories. This is part of the Eagle Report also that specifies a specific location, type of filter, type of water usage it is, and what we're doing to maintain compliance with the regulations. Primarily, in any and all of these fixture units, we'll be putting up some type of, right now, I've just generalized it as a hand washing sign only. Will be posted to each one of those areas to indicate that this is not for drinking or consumption. That verbiage may change. Some of this stuff is still in flux at this point in time, but for purposes of reporting to the state, this was what their recommended statement to use was. And then finally, we have what we call the inoperable fixture inventory. And this is actually, we've gone through and identified units that can be removed or taken out of service. It's more than just a matter of turning off the valves. We have to remove any and all related piping to make sure that we don't create what would be considered a stagnant water line, which then creates and generates additional bacteria which can backfeed into our actual water supply systems. So we're going through, we've actually specifically identified components and pieces. We met with contractors, actually, we've met with contractors a number of times. Again, today, we had MCM down here, who we've partnered with in the past, to assist us in going through and coming up with some creative solutions to try to address these problems, or address these. problems or address these situations. Beyond that, the document also requires us to identify per classification a filter maintenance schedule, which we have to maintain through inspections on a weekly basis as well as annually, and then also a annual sampling schedule of any and all filtered water sources within each and every one of the buildings. So just to kind of give you a scope and scale of what each one of the plans for each one of the buildings entails, this is just the one for Andrews Elementary. So on a good note, that being said, as part of all this, as we've been going through this, we had the opportunity to work with our preliminary Drinking Water Management Plans, and we submitted a funding request through Eagle Filter First Healthy Hydration Grant, which was made available to us and submitted on October 24. Earlier this month, because, of course, all these things that we're doing require funds, we were notified that Three Rivers Community Schools had been awarded $323,483 to support our efforts moving forward over the course of the next nine months. So we're very excited about that. Again, these are legal requirements, these are non-opional, we don't have a choice, all these things must be done, which isn't exactly what we want to do to protect our students and our staff. That being said, though, the financial impact can be quite sizable. So the funding from this particular grant is really going to assist us in achieving those goals. Additionally, we also chose to collaborate with a Filter First Initiative. We're working with Eagle through their voluntary lead testing in school and childcare facilities grant program. This program is funded by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and focuses on testing drinking water and food preparation taps in schools and childcare facilities. In conjunction, we'll be partnering with our local health department. Some of the results of this effort include, actually, during the week of January 6, so coming up here pretty soon, Tri Media Environmental and Engineering, who's been contracted through the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, is going to be performing with us a drinking water assessment for all of our schools. We'll take the information gathered from this effort, and then we'll utilize that to finalize our preliminary-developed district Drinking Water Management Plans and water sampling plans for all the district schools. And then by January 24 of 2025, we're going to take all these finalized plans, and we'll make them available to Eagle and our local health department. And then, of course, during the next year, nine months actually, we'll be completing the required plumbing modifications at each school so that we're completed by October of 2025.
That's all.
There you go. That's all. That's it. So next time you go get a drink of water out of one of the faucets, there's a whole lot going on behind the scenes with those. So any questions at this point?
I just have a comment. After reading, I was thinking if our water source does not contain any lead for testing, then why would we have to have all these filters? And so then, but then I read like the second page, and it looks like you can get lead from practically anything, even, I think they don't even know sometimes why. But I mean, yeah, solder has lead in it, and copper pipes don't, but lead pipes do. But we don't have, I'm sure we don't have that here, but we probably have a bunch of stuff that's soldered.
Yeah, and over the course of time, you know, building codes and regulations have changed, especially specifically related to plumbing codes. So in some of our older infrastructures, there could have been lead solder or solder that had lead content in it. Of course, you know, in the recent past, I mean, the last 15, 20 years, products and stuff are lead-free. So that's been normalized at this point in time. But just the same, you have in a system, you know, we have to think system-wide, not just local. So in a system, you could have trace amounts that are being picked up from somewhere down the line, and they travel through, travel through, travel through, and even though we have all good things, at point of use, there's a potential that some trace amount could come out. Now, up to this point in all of our testing and everything else, you know, drinking water and everything is fine. We run in conjunction with the city, who also runs their tests, so there are, you know, opportunities for potential lead contamination, and this is a preliminary effort to move forward statewide. You know, it's an initiative across the state and a number of other states, actually, at this point in time, to just really protect, you know, the youth of our state in particular, so in our school systems, so.
Well, we've got, okay, so then, is Park serviced by the Lockport Township Water System? Okay, and then Norton has a well.
Norton has a well, it's called a non-community. Yeah, and that was another thing, it was kind of as a sidebar in preparation for all this, because, I mean, we've been aware, we've been waiting for things to come down with some finalizations related to what are going to be the specific expectations, so we're not moving in a direction and then having to change direction. I had a number of our staff actually go through training, and, well, actually, it was an internal training that I created, and worked with them, but we went through, and we're actually certified by the State of Michigan as Level 2 S5 Water System Operators. So we just completed that here this last month. So that'd be Stephen Sterwell, Paul Barton, Jonathan Hamilton, and myself. So, and this is in preparation to broaden our understanding, and it's actually above and beyond any of the requirements being imposed by the state, but it was a very cost-effective way to move us in a direction that aligns us with a better understanding so that as we move forward with these initiatives, we can do it as efficiently as possible and also have a keen awareness of exactly where we need to go.
And as you may have said, maybe you didn't, no level of lead is acceptable, so.
That's where we're going.
Tiny, tiny amount.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Brian, question for you. Has there been, so like looking through this and seeing the number of fixtures that we're going to have, has there been any long-term projection on what the cost of replacing the filters is going to be?
That's what we're working on right now.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And are they like monthly, like change every three months?
It depends. They have to be monitored, so they're monitored filtered systems, so that will dictate the frequency.
Okay.
I wouldn't, you know, I mean, you could run safely, anticipate at least annually. If not, more so than that. Again, I'd have to dive down to the specifics depending on the type of point-of-use filter it is we're talking about. Some of that stuff, we still are seeking further clarification as far as what's the best way to do this, because, again, to your point, we have a lot of incurred costs. Besides just the purchase of the filters, you have how do you get to the filter, how is it accessed, we have labor costs, staffing costs, I mean, it's, if you think of every one of these filtered units having to be visually inspected and then recorded in one of these documents, you know, on a weekly basis, not to mention an annual, that's a lot of work. And then to change the filters relatedly, maintain that, stock for that. So those are things that we're working on the details of right now.
The grant funding is awesome.
It is, it is. That was a blessing.
But, yeah, sometimes you don't think about what's the long-term.
Yeah, and the grant did include some.
We've talked about that as our superintendent meetings, too, is, you know, it's great that, you know, they're looking out, but what is the impact on districts for financial in the long term?
Well, and that's.
I mean, October, it was voted on, and January, this report's due, we've got to start the ball rolling. That's a fast turnaround for a big project.
Yeah.
And that's also one of the reasons we went through, and I've talked to a number of the faculty, her instructional staff, principals, you know, the regulations require filtration of certain units and certain grade levels, so such as your pre and your kindergarten levels. Beyond that, then the question then comes, do we actually look at putting bottle fill stations in that are filtered versus taking out the classroom bubblers? So we've talked to, you know, each one of the schools and many different folks across the spectrum of people that utilize a school and said, hey, you know, really, how often do you use this? It'd be cost-effective for us actually to remove it. So that's part of that, I believe it was the second page where we talked about inoperable. Those are units that we're going to be making inoperable, capping them off, you know, and actually putting them out of service. So.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on to our action items. Up first is the 2023-24 Audit Approval. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the final 23-24 Audit Report as presented. Are there comments or questions on the audit? Thank you, everyone who participated in that this year and got all the information we needed. It looked great. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Melissa Bliss. Nicole Hoover.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
John McDonough.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes. Yes, motion passes 6-0. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone wants pulled out of the consent agenda? Any motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Melissa Bliss. Nicole Hoover.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
John McDonough.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Yes, the motion passes 6-0. And our board calendar, December 17 is tomorrow, will be the Three Rivers High School Winter Choir Concert. December 23 through January 3 is our winter break, and on January 13 will be our first Board of Education organizational meeting for 2025, where we will welcome our two new board members. Anything I'm missing from the calendar? All right, any board member comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. It's been such an honor to be a member of the board this past year. I'm grateful for the members of the board for selecting me to finish out the term of a former board member. And, you know, I've learned a lot this past year, and one of the overwhelming things that I've learned is that our district is in such great hands from the top down. Our superintendent is second to none. We are so lucky to have her. All of our administrative staff, as well as all of our principals and everyone else, have shown me that, you know, we're in such great hands, and then our amazing teachers. You know, most people know that my father was a board member and my mother was a teacher for 31 years in this district. And, you know, Three Rivers has always been home to me, and we are in very, very good hands. And I'm honored to have served on this board with all of you, and thank you very much. And, you know, in the future, I hope to be a part of the board once again.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
I just want to say thank you to John and Melissa, who is not here, unfortunately, but it's been a pleasure working with Melissa for four years, and then John, since you've joined us about a year and a half ago. So thank you for all you both have done for our district. And then Nicole and Julia, thank you, but they're coming back on for four more years, so they will, they were re-elected in.
Is there a ribbon for that?
So. You get participation. So, you know, while we have new faces, I think we have great things going on with everybody else that continues to stay. So, John, thank you for your time and dedication in the last few years. Well, it's been about a year now, hasn't it? I don't know, it all runs together. I've been here 23 years, all the years run together, so thank you, John.
Any other board member? So I wish all our administrators and teachers happy holidays. Hope you all have safe travels if you're going anywhere, and thank you for everything that you did for us in 2024. And I think the reports we saw tonight, just again, reiterate how much good stuff we've got going in the district, and our district wouldn't be going as well as it is if it wasn't for leaders that are sitting in the back of the room and up at the table. So, thank you, guys. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Nicole Hoover.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
John McDonough.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.